This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting of June 4th, 2019. To begin this evening, I welcome everybody that is in attendance here in this room and those that may be watching us live streaming. It is one of our very special evening meetings tonight. We will be conferring tenure and awarding certificates to a large group of folks that are in this room along with many of their family members to celebrate. So it is a special evening. In adhering to that, we will offer the opportunity for public comment that we traditionally offer at the beginning of our agenda. We will offer that opportunity to members of the public after we complete the tenure approval and awarding of certificate process. We will also have a little bit of a built-in break in there for folks who have to leave to attend to other things. Allow them to do that. So to begin with this evening's board, may we please have a motion to approve our agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
By Marv, seconded by Andrea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then before we move to the tenure portion, a motion, please. As you can see, we've met every day or so in the last month. Approval of the minutes from our May 7th, May 14th, May 21st, May 28th, and May 30th meetings, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Marv. Any corrections, additions, or deletions to any of those five sets of minutes? Please refer to it by date. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, then I will... First, what we'll do this evening, we will seek a motion for approval of the tenure recommendations as listed in the agenda for administrator tenure, teacher tenure, and also our teaching assistant tenure. We will act on that recommendation and then we will award certificates. And Dr. McGowan will recognize each individual recipient as we award certificates. So that will be the process for this evening. So motion, please, for approval of the tenure recommendations as listed in those three categories.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina. By Christina. Any comments or questions or anything for her? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We've all been granted tenure. We'll now move forward with the best part of the evening in presentation of the certificates to all three groups. Jolene and I will move up to the podium and Dr. McGowan will acknowledge all the individuals. When you're called up, we ask you to come and join us over there if you would. Thank you.
So while they're on the way up, I just wanted to say a thing or two, and I promise emphasis on the thing or two, not any more than that, which is this: There are so many family members that are here tonight, and I just want to point out particularly to the kids that are here, how much we appreciate you lending your family to us. Your parents, your uncles, your aunts, grandparents, whatever the relationship may be. You have allowed them to spend considerable amount of time and energy and pursue their passion and share their perspectives and all of their greatness that they have with our children. For many of them, actually, with my children in particular. So I say to you as a dad and as their colleague, how much we appreciate that. To the families and the spouses beyond just the children, we say thank you as well because they spent untold hours in our classrooms, in our hallways, at events, doing so many great things for the children of this community. Sometimes thanklessly, sometimes certainly not rewarded with riches and fame, although they're famous in the eyes of any young people, but nonetheless impacting the future in a way that is hard to measure and hard to express in just words. So thank you for the time that you've allowed them to spend with our children. The granting of tenure is a really unique moment. So for all of you, what it means is that this community decided it wants the people that are here tonight receiving tenure to be here for the long term, forever in fact, and that we appreciate them in such a way that we can't do without them, that we need them here working with our kids and not doing that anywhere else because they are that important to this school community. It is a lifetime achievement. It's one that should be recognized that way, and that's why we take the time to do this. So thank you for celebrating with us. I would say to you, there's plenty of food and drink also in the hallway on your way out. We really want this to be an occasion that you remember and that you enjoy and that you really have the opportunity to kind of revel in this moment. There are a few career milestones in this work, and this is a really important one where people can think about the way they've impacted children in such special ways. So congratulations to all of you, to your families. We're so excited to have the opportunity to continue to work with you and to watch your gifts continue to grow and blossom. You've meant so much to our children. Thank you for that. So with that, the list is all over the board, so we'll see if you can predict the order to it, and more importantly, we'll see if Mr. Kikonovich and Mrs. Gilbert can predict the order to it. Would I ask you to do...
Somebody's going to get a certificate.
No doubt.
Switch them around later.
If you could come up to where Mark and Jolene are standing, and then I get to embarrass you more publicly, and they will then hand you a certificate and everybody will have an opportunity to acknowledge you. So with that, I see your bright smile looking right at me. Deidre Carter, please come on up.
Deidre has an associate's degree in liberal arts from Monroe Community College, bachelor's degree in music education from Robert's Wesleyan, and a master's in special education also from Robert's Wesleyan, has a Level 2 Teaching Assistant certification, and has been a teaching assistant with us since 2011 at Brighton High School. "On any given day," it's written by Dr. Hall, "Deidre can be found talking to our students about academics, sports, club interests, and any other topic students want to talk to her about in the study hall room or on the court track or field as she regularly attends student sporting events. She has strong work ethic and a high level of enthusiasm for what she does. To say that Deidre's energy and passion for what she does is inspiring to watch and be a part of is an understatement. Most importantly, she regularly communicates with teachers, counselors, and administrators when she feels a student needs additional assistance or attention. Deidre works also in our in-school suspension room. Deidre runs that like a tight ship and helps kids in so many different ways. I would say best described as a counselor, a drill sergeant, a teacher, often a custodian, a nurse, and some type of spiritual advisor depending on the student. In every way, shape, or form, she wears a lot of hats and makes a huge difference in the lives of our children. For that and so many other reasons, we're glad that she's being granted tenure tonight. Congratulations, Deidre."
Annette Wyman. We will recognize Annette, but in the interest of time for all the families here, we'll continue to move through the rest of the list. Dr. Leener has a degree in geology from the U of R, also a master's degree in geology from SUNY Buffalo, a certificate of advanced study in educational leadership from SUNY Buffalo, and his doctorate in educational leadership from the University of Rochester, permanent certifications in math 7-12, earth science, general science 7-12, physics 7-12, and as a school administrative supervisor and school district administrator. He has been here as an administrator since 2010 when he became an assistant principal, and since 2015 as the director of innovative student learning. Prior to that, he was a science curriculum supervisor and science teacher in Westerondacoit. And it's our great pleasure to recommend and grant tenure to Mike Leener this evening. He came to us, as I said, in 2010 from Westerondacoit and has since become that director of innovative student learning. He's a consummate learner in the ever-changing landscape of education. He's responsible for leading the entire K-12 visual performing arts department. In addition, he leads the district's instructional technology program overseeing the integration of multiple technologies into teaching and learning environments. And in both of these roles, Mike has excelled. He's also positioned himself as the district authority in the area of instructional technology, working closely with Eric Jordan, the instructional technology teachers on special assignment. He's a learner, attending workshops, conferences, and joining networks to create a personal learning plan for himself. He's also an ever-present fixture at visual performing arts events, providing leadership, support, and guidance. For these reasons and all of his connections with kids and wonderful work in the district, we recommend and are pleased that Mike Leener has tenure in this district. Mike has a BFA in acting from Wright State University, a BS in English from SUNY Brockport, a master's in adolescent education from Robert's Wesleyan, and a certificate of advanced study and admin from SUNY Oswego. Professional certifications in English 7-12 and theater, and his initial certification administrator of SBL and professional administrative certification as a school district leader. He's been an assistant principal here since 2015. He was an English teacher from 2007 through 2015 in the Rush Henryetta School District. Mike has been an assistant principal who's exhibited compassion, professionalism, and outstanding leadership. He's a caring and dedicated professional. He's committed with a gift for working with teenagers and their parents, a unique combination of experiences that includes teaching students with special needs, teaching English at the high school level, and working as an English standards leader in Rush Henryetta. He directed countless plays, musicals, at RH and the Rochester community. Combined with leadership and personal skills, it gives him a wide range of strengths. In fact, for example, he has done an incredible job working with our science department, making plans for the renovation of our entire science facilities in 2020, 21. He listened to feedback, worked with various science teams, and collaborated to develop plans moving forward. He's an asset to BHS in the Brighton School District, exemplifying our motto of caring for excellence in his daily work with kids, parents, and staff. One of his greatest accomplishments in addition to successfully overseeing the English department is his contribution to the creation of our master schedule, which is done far sooner and more efficiently than ever before, although certainly the building blocks, I should point out, by Mike Leener, who's here, not to sound like he didn't do a great job at it all. He moved that direction, and Mike continues to build on that. He's a leader who is committed to education and students, and it is... His work is considered outstanding for his connection to children, his individual work with each and every family. It's for this reason and many more that we're excited he's been granted tenure this evening. Congratulations, Mike. Stacy has a bachelor's degree in English from SUNY Brockport, a master's in education from SUNY Brockport, and a master of library science from the University of Buffalo, permanent certification in English grade 7 through 12. She's been an English teacher at 12 Corners since 2016, instructional coach prior to that in Churchville-Chile, literacy coach at Bocees 2, and an English teacher in Wayne, Pittsford, Oliver Middle School in Brockport, and DeSoto Middle School in Arcadia, Florida. We're very glad that you found a home here, Stacy. She has been many places, and in all of those, especially in this experience, she has demonstrated incredible love for children and a commitment to their growth as individuals. She's been a phenomenal addition to the school culture in the 7th grade English classes. She's patient, kind, caring, extremely knowledgeable about the best way to approach each learning standard and each child. Her experience as a literacy coach has been invaluable in the building as well. She's led our TCMS Strong Mentor Program and has grown because of it, and it has grown because of her supportive and calm approach, particularly with working in that program, but also where she demonstrates at in terms of her classroom. She has experience with restorative practices and peace circles. She's helped build those practices at TCMS. She has also taken culturally responsive literature class and been a leader in this area for our students. Her student-parent and particularly interactions within the building with her colleagues have demonstrated her professionalism and her commitment to the instructional growth of each child. She's a great value and an incredible contributor to the entire school community. For that and many other reasons, we are so glad that she's been granted tenure this evening. Congratulations. Kevin has a bachelor's degree in psychology from St. Bonaventure, a master's in education and school counseling from SUNY Brockport, provisional certification as a school counselor, and has been a school counselor here since 2015 following experience as a school counselor at Roth Middle School. He has clearly demonstrated that he is an incredibly caring, enthusiastic, talented, and collaborative person and professional. He has a tremendous gift for successfully working with all kinds of learners and goes above and beyond to develop positive relationships with students and their parents. He's professional, hardworking, compassionate, organized, and extremely collaborative. He truly loves his profession. He led the implementation of the new Student Link Crew Program for new and transfer students and has been extremely collaborative in revamping grade-level parent nights and student counseling seminars. As said by Dr. Hall, he's an asset to his students, our parents, the counseling department, and to Brighton High School. We are proud and honored that he has been granted tenure and confident that he will continue to make outstanding contributions to BHS and at Brighton for many years to come.
After graduating from Brighton High School, she achieved a bachelor's in American Studies, Adolescence Ed, and Inclusive Ed from St. John Fisher, a master's in literacy from St. John Fisher, and a master's in educational leadership also from St. John Fisher. She has professional certifications, and if you're keeping track, she may have won tonight, in childhood education 1 through 6, early childhood education, social studies grade 7 through 12, social studies 7 through 12, students with disabilities, literacy reading teacher grade 5 through 12, literacy reading teacher birth through grade 6, and as a school district leader as well. She was a literacy coach at TCMS and BHS for two years, position she held right prior to becoming a teacher at TCMS. She's been an adjunct instructor also at St. John Fisher and teaches master's candidates on various instructional methods. She earned tenure prior to experience at Brighton as a special education teacher at Victor Senior High School. She's been doing a fabulous job at TCMS. Her students adore her, as do their parents. She makes excellent connections, is always extending herself to the students and their families to offer more support, and especially to find ways to help students who are below grade level. Her classroom is a 21st century model and is never contained by the four walls. She is always connecting with other people, places, and experiences all over the world through technology, making the study of ancient civilizations come alive. She's highly organized, extremely thoughtful in her approach, and on a number of committees contributing to the professional environment as well. She's recommended for tenure for her positive impact on TCMS and her continued work. We are so fortunate to have her as Mr. Thomas writes, and her drive, knowledge, and expertise working with our children. Congratulations to Maria.
Tenors a bachelor's degree in phys ed from SUNY Brockport, a master's in education from SUNY Brockport, professional certification in physical education, and in health. Her experience includes prior to coming to us in 2016, experience as a phys ed teacher at French Road, I should say prior to coming to 12 Corners, a phys ed teacher at French Road, a phys ed adaptive PE teacher in the Webster Central School District, and an adaptive PE teacher at Bocees 1. She's been teaching in the phys ed department, as we said, since 2014, both with work at French Road and 12 Corners. She has an incredible ability to connect with students in Brighton. Her caring attitude is contagious and creates a learning environment for her students that is very special. Her classroom environment is fun. It's fun-loving and a positive space. She enjoys every minute as a teacher, and it shows in her work with children. Her students have ultimate trust in her and allows them to perform at the highest level. She's positive, encouraging, responsive to each student's needs, and is able to listen to feedback and creatively plan effectively for each individual child. She develops individual relationships with students and with their families. She's active outside the classroom as well, and her ability to collaborate with others is unmatched. She's a critical member of the phys ed department as they've changed curriculum throughout the district to best serve all students in our school community. She's also a coach who's contributed to several programs and takes time on her own. In fact, the last time we spoke was last night when I bumped into her at a game that was not the students that she coaches, but rather our softball team that she went to just to cheer them on. Her classroom is built on a foundation of respect. She develops positive relationships and is a special contributor to the professional environment. We're so excited for this and many other reasons for her to be recommended and granted tenure tonight. Kendra has a bachelor's degree in music education from SUNY Pottstown and a master's in music performance from Northern Illinois University. Initial certification in music, grade 7 through 12. She's a music teacher at 12 Corners Middle School, and prior to that was a music teacher at Twin Towers Middle School in Middletown, New York. Dr. Leener writes that he has found her over the past three years to be a student-centered, passionate, reflective, and active collaborator. She has a strong ability to engage all students, and her commitment to helping all students access music in their lives and her ability to work well with others as a music team member make her a deserving candidate for tenure. She's a student-centered educator, regularly planning small group lessons and ensemble rehearsals with the needs of individual students in mind. She thinks flexibly to allow students to find an accessible entry point and personalized pathway to help them meet clearly articulated learning objectives. She's a true team player. She's been an excellent addition to our faculty in the music department and entire school community, looks for innovative ways to engage and support children in our program, meeting them where they are and finding individual pathways to their success. She works well with colleagues to support the district's mission and vision and generates a high level of enthusiasm around music. She's consistently demonstrated her willingness to go above and beyond expectations for the benefit of her students. She's present at district events beyond her own concerts and is always ready to lend a hand to colleagues and students when needed. She's quickly become a valued member of the music family, and for this and so many other reasons, we are so glad that she's been granted tenure tonight. Andy has a bachelor's degree in history from SUNY Brockport and a master's in elementary education from St. John Fisher, professional certification in childhood education grades 1 through 6, and students with disabilities grades 1 through 6. He's a special education teacher at French Road Elementary School since 2015 and has worked in the extended school year program often throughout his time here at Brighton. He's got a bachelor's... Oh, I'm sorry, I mentioned that already. He is also a Brighton High School graduate, which is what I meant to say prior to his bachelor's degree, and has been a lifelong Brighton contributor. He's a committed educator who goes above and beyond in his work with students, colleagues, and parents each day. We could truly say that Andy exemplifies the Fresz star qualities with his interactions with all individuals. He's kind, caring, takes time to connect with each one of the students in his class. His classroom is a peaceful, collaborative learning community where he makes sure all students get the individual support that they need. His 5th grade classroom community is inclusive of all students, and he highlights their individual strengths as they grow and learn. He's very thoughtful about social-emotional learning as well, working together with his colleagues. He has created a Zen Zone this year to develop social-emotional skills for students through the use of peace circles and restorative practice. I look forward to personally engaging in his Zen Zone. Dr. Rio mentions that she has truly enjoyed visiting Andy's classroom, watching his interactions with our students, and throughout his time at French Road, he's shown a desire to grow and learn as an educator, and he's committed to his students and their families. He is an asset to both our students and to the Fresz community. We're proud to honor and recognize Andy in this way, and so glad that he's been granted tenure. Congratulations, Andy. Jane Lynn Pickering. Jane Lynn has a BFA in visual media photography from RIT, a BFA in fine arts from the University of the Arts, and a master's in art education also from RIT, professional certification in visual arts, and has been an art teacher here at Brighton since 2015 when she was a part-time art teacher becoming full-time in 2016. She was an art teacher prior to that from 2010 through 2015 in the East Rondacoit Central School District. Her contributions are numerous. She's had a tremendous positive impact on the school community. She's committed to the students that she serves in the Brighton community. Under her leadership, our enrollment in the photography program has grown by 50% and currently serves as an entry point to the art program for many students. During the 18-19 school year, Jane Lynn and a colleague from the technology department teamed up to co-teach a new course, the Understanding Design Course. This course gave students an opportunity to explore how art and technology combine in a creative process that results in the products that we see in our daily lives. Students also visit local businesses to make real-world connections between the concepts they learned in class and their application in the real world. Her passion for helping students see the relative relevant connections between their academic experience and application of careers in the arts is evident in this work. She has served also as advisor of the yearbook, a huge undertaking, and provides opportunities for students to explore their passion for capturing images through the photography club. To provide a relevant experience and authentic audience for their work, this club contracted to take the team photographs for the athletic department this year. She's reflective, professional, creative, and she deeply cares for the students she teaches. She has a firm understanding of the standards and curriculum and knows how to effectively guide students in their learning to meet those standards. She cares about each individual child that she works with and is an outstanding contributor to the department and to the district. For that and so many reasons, we recognize you and congratulate you on your tenure, Jane Lynn. Jeff has a bachelor's in music from Johnson State College and a master's in inclusive childhood education from Nazareth College, professional certifications in childhood education grades 1 through 6, and students with disabilities grades 1 through 6. Special education teacher at French Road Elementary School since 2015. He was at Crestwood Children's Center as a special education teacher from 2010 through He's connected with many students and faculty since he started at French Road. Words alone cannot describe the respected and cherished connection he is able to make with the students that he works with each day. Jeff's care and dedication for his students is shown in individualized instruction in both academic and social-emotional that he provides for his students. His positivity and enthusiasm for students, families, and staff shines through in all of the work that he does. He provides a warm, safe, nurturing, and positive learning environment for his students. He is a strong collaborator, works with his teammates to problem-solve and think outside the box to meet the needs of our students, and has developed trusting relationships with staff, parents, and children, finding solutions for each individual child. His philosophy of teaching is very student-centered, with each student's individual learning reflected in the way that works best for them. His individuality himself has truly been a gift at French Road. His interests, including music, origami, woodworking, gardening, and raising chickens, to name a few, all the reasons why he's referred to by one Charlie McGowan as the world's most interesting man, have helped to bridge a connection to students in a unique way. We are certain that he will continue to make meaningful, longstanding contributions to Fresz and Brighton for many years to come and are so grateful for his acknowledgement with the tenure appointment tonight. Ashley has a bachelor's degree in childhood special education from St. John Fisher and a master's in literacy education also from St. John Fisher, professional certifications in childhood education 1 through 6, students with disabilities 1 through 6, and literacy birth through grade 6. She's a 2nd grade teacher in 18-19 at Council Rock, 17-18 a 1st grade teacher, 16-17 a 2nd grade teacher also at Council Rock, a reading specialist at Wilson Foundation Academy in 2015, and a 1st grade teacher at Nathaniel Rochester School from 2005 through 2015. She's one of the most energetic and expressive teachers that Mr. Tepin has ever had the pleasure of working with in his career. When you add to her classroom, you know that you're going to have fun while working very hard at your own learning. She creates an atmosphere that is child-centered and celebratory and allows kids to feel a part of something bigger than themselves. She gets to know each student as an individual and capitalizes on the relationships that she builds to get the best out of each student. She's a leader in using technology in creative and innovative ways. She looks to highlight the strengths of students, building them up and really living the growth mindset. Her students know that she is in it with them, and she isn't going to give up on them and won't let them give up on themselves. She demonstrates excellence in teaching and in leadership. She's enthusiastic, positive, has a creative nature, and a dedication to her craft that contributes a great deal to the building and the district. We are so proud of her and acknowledge her tenure appointment this evening. Sam has a bachelor's in accounting from Ithaca, a bachelor's in education from Nazareth, and a master's in business and marketing education from Nazareth as well, permanent certifications in business and distributive education, and coordinator of work-based learning. He was a business teacher here since 2016. He was a part-time business teacher as well from 2013 to 16, and a business teacher in the Honeyeye Falls Lima School District from 2001 to 2013. He is currently teaching a variety of business courses at BHS and overseeing the work-based learning program. Observations in Sam's classes and informal interactions show Sam to be professional, competent. Observations in Sam's classes and informal interactions show Sam to be professional, competent, caring, and extremely collaborative. He is a tremendous gift for being reflective of his practice and is always looking for new and innovative ways to make our business program even better. For example, after Sam's first two years at Brighton, he proposed a new 21st century type business called Virtual Enterprise. Virtual Enterprise allows students to simulate a real-life business from start to finish, including hiring, marketing, website design, management, and sales. The course has really taken off and is very, very popular. In his business classroom, he works hard to create an instructional environment that emphasizes real-life applications, collaboration, and engaging learning activities. He's an integral member of the Brighton School Community in so many ways, currently coaching girls varsity basketball, and previously a coach of varsity softball. His classroom, as well as the conversations about Virtual Enterprise and the proposed online finance course, definitely demonstrate his professionalism, his creativity, and his commitment to each child. He's truly an asset to his students, to the business department, and to Brighton High School. For that and so many reasons, we are excited for his tenure appointment this evening. Kelly Sharo. Kelly has a bachelor's degree in childhood education from St. John Fisher and a master's in literacy, birth through grade six from SUNY Geneseo. Professional certifications in childhood education, literacy reading, teacher, grades one through six and five through 12. She's been a reading teacher here in the district for this past year, but a literacy coach the two years previously at French Road. She's at Council Rock this year. She was a reading specialist in Churchville prior to joining us, a reading specialist in Pelmyra, Pelmac, I'm sorry, and a reading ELA teacher also at Pelmac, and a fourth grade long-term sub in the Hilton Central School District before joining Pelmac. She's a phenomenal teacher, as written by Mr. Tappan, an expert at her discipline of reading and is constantly looking to learn and hone her expertise. She connects very deeply with each of her students, getting to know them, both as a reader and as an individual. She utilizes assessment in order to pinpoint student strengths and areas for continued growth. In this way, she capitalizes on their strengths while really providing support for students as they develop their skills in reading and writing. They gain confidence while working with Kelly and she provides them with an environment where they feel comfortable taking the necessary risks in order to grow and learn. She is like a skilled reading surgeon, like that description. She uses every resource available to her to diagnose and provide laser-like interventions to each child. Incredibly collaborative, working with many different teachers and other support staff, she's actively involved in the RTI process, the LA Building Committee, and several other district-level committees. She has an incredible knowledge-based collaborative nature, desire to continue to learn and improve, and a deep commitment to each and every child. For that and many reasons more, we're so glad that you've been granted tenure tonight. Lori Sider. Lori has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from SUNY Potsdam and a bachelor's in special education from the University of Rochester. Permanent certifications in nursery kindergarten in grades one through six and special education K through 12. A special education teacher at Brighton High School since 2015 and full-time since 2016. Prior to that, she was a long-term sub in special education in Manchester Shortsville and a second grade teacher in the Brockport Central School District from 1996 until 2005. Observations in Lori's resource room, ICT classes, functional skills math classes, ACE math classes, and informal interactions in meetings and in department meetings show Lori to be professional, competent, caring, enthusiastic, and extremely collaborative. Lori has a tremendous gift for successfully working with all kinds of learners. She goes out of her way to develop positive relationships with her students and their parents. She works diligently to create an instructional environment that emphasizes individualized instruction, collaboration, and activity-centered learning. Her classroom is a warm and inviting place for students to come and learn. Students are often laughing, completely engaged, and having fun while learning math under Lori's guidance in the classroom. She has a great rapport with the sports staff that she works with as a team as well. Assistant Principal Teresa Moser has pointed out that while at Brighton, Lori has taught functional skills and social, functional skills, social studies, and math, ACE Essentials of Algebra, ICT Algebra I, and all levels of resource room. She cares deeply about the students that she works with and their families. She is a strong student advocate and active member of the Brighton Support Team. She is a team player seeking out the advice of colleagues while also offering unconditional support to each child. It is that work and so many other gifts for which we are grateful that she's been acknowledged with tenure tonight. Congratulations. Paula has an associate's degree in liberal arts from Morrisville College, a bachelor's in elementary education from SUNY Oswego, and a master's in reading from Nazareth College. Permanent certifications in nursery kindergarten in grades one through six and in reading. She is currently a literacy coach at Council Rock. Prior to that, she was a reading teacher at Council Rock, a kindergarten teacher from 1999 until 2016 at Council Rock, and a second grade teacher from 1992 until 1999. Now, what you don't see in this packet are the list of in-services, or you don't see the packet, for many people, for all of the candidates, there's a list of in-services. I don't read them all because then we'd be here really until tomorrow. But if I was to read Paula's, we'd be here until Friday. The list is pages long of the amount of in-service and professional development that Paula has engaged in, which is a sign to all of you and to us of how she has engaged in her own professional learning and honed her craft over the length of her career. Her biggest strength lies in the relationships, though, that she builds with others. She is wonderful with students, parents, families, fellow staff members, and administrators alike. She's able to capitalize on relationships, her experience, and her breadth of knowledge to provide incredible support for our classrooms in terms of literacy. She is willing to have the difficult conversations in order to improve practice and support students. She's a learner as well and never stops reading, attending workshops, case in point, listening in order to grow as a professional. As an instructional coach, she has been a wonderful support to nearly every classroom teacher, listening to determine what that teacher needs, not what she thinks they need, but to determine what they are saying that they need and helping to provide them with the resources that they need to be successful. She's incredibly collaborative with her peers, knows her strengths and where she can help individual teachers. Since being the reading teacher and literacy coach role, she has taken on a great deal of leadership and she does it with finesse and flair. She demonstrates excellence in teaching and learning and in teaching others how to teach better. She's got excellent, she has excellent people skills, compassion, dedication, and a passion for helping each learner at Council Rock and at Brighton. For that and her many gifts, we are so glad she's been recognized again for tenure in the Brighton School District. Kelly Tripp. Kelly has an associate's degree in early childhood education from a community college, a bachelor's in elementary and special education from Nazareth College, and a master's in students with disabilities also from Nazareth College. Permanent certifications in nursery kindergarten in grades one through six and in special education. She's been a first grade teacher at Council Rock from 2017 until now. She was a long-term sub second grade teacher also at Council Rock, and prior to that from 1991 to 2000, a special education K through five teacher in the Fairport Central School District. Mr. Tappan writes that she served as a long-term sub for several months and for a majority of the year at first grade before being hired permanently as a first grade teacher. She's the ultimate learner, seeking feedback at each turn and taking and using resources to make her practice better. She's taken every bit of feedback and turned it into a wonderful classroom environment for her students. In her classroom, there is a calm and incredibly nurturing atmosphere where students feel welcome and empowered to own their learning. Students take a lead role in establishing the routine and lead the direction of learning through their questions and wondering. She has grown as a teacher of reading and literacy in so many ways as well, participating in several study groups in order to adopt the best practice for all of her students. She collaborates with her fellow teammates, many committees, serving on many committees, including the K through five report card committee and the building ELA committee. She completes her probationary period, demonstrating excellence in teaching and leadership, her understanding of the primary classroom and students, deep level of commitment to grow and learn in her pedagogy, and dedication to students, and for her many gifts in addressing the individual needs of learners. We recognize her this evening and congratulate you on your tenure. Last but certainly not least, Mike Wayne. Mike Wayne has a bachelor's degree in history from St. Lawrence University and a master's in inclusive education, grades seven through 12 from Nazareth College. Initial certification in students with disabilities, seven through 12 generalist, and social studies seven through 12. A special education teacher at Brighton High School and at St. John Fisher since 2015 and a Brighton collaboration, and at the Kessler Center from 2011 to 2015. Mike started as a TCMS teacher in the 1214 special education classroom in September of 2015 and worked for two years in this capacity. During his second year at TCMS, he was an integral member of a team of teachers and administrators that worked to develop a transition program for our classified students to continue their education until age 21. He took on the role as the teacher in the newly-developed program that is currently housed at St. John Fisher College, working with this very wonderful group of children to attend college and provide that college experience for them. He spent the last two years continuing to develop Project Grow, that transition program. He's researched and developed individualized life skill curriculums for each of the students depending on their individual needs and skill levels. In addition, he has built relationships with several area businesses and organizations that now provide work opportunities for our students in the program. His goal is for each of the students to leave BCSD connected to adult services, have identified job opportunities, and develop the skills to live as independently as possible and be connected to social opportunities in the community. He's an asset to the special education department as he is to Brighton as a coach as well and a contributor to our overall professional environment. Has an incredible work ethic, love of children, and ability to connect with families. He is a great benefit to the community and we recognize him this evening for his many contributions and acknowledge his tenure. I'd also like to recognize Lou Carson tonight. I'm sorry, it was not last but least, Lou Carson.
It's good. It's already done. No problem. You have, I just have to...
Was I saying anything nice about me or no?
No. I've got a lot of nice things to say about you, but please hold. I'm looking for Mrs. Lands of Fame. Michelle, sir, we have not forgotten about you. Please to recognize Lou Carson for his tenure appointment as a science teacher in the Brighton Central School District. Observations in Lou's classes and informal interactions in meetings and in the classroom this year show Lou to be professional, competent, passionate, caring, and enthusiastic. He's extremely collaborative. He's proven himself to be flexible and proactive in working with struggling students, offering up opportunities for students to make up work and complete corrections as well. He's taken on a leadership role in his department by collaboratively working to make the science department renovation proposals as well. His work has been insightful and forward-thinking. He goes above and beyond the call of duty to develop positive relationships with his students. In fact, he's participated in our annual faculty talent show for the past several years. Leading the band last year was a very impressive role as well. Kids in college alike have appreciated his willingness to demonstrate his other talents beyond the classroom, and they honored Lou when they asked him to participate in the fall musical performance as one of the lead characters. He's an integral member of the Brighton School Community. He coaches the golf team and is an assistant varsity boys' basketball coach as well. Mike Pincelli points out in his observations, Lou Carson has proven an excellent addition to the BHS Science Department following his experience at Eastridge. He is consistently exploring new and innovative instructional practices in his classroom, such as inquiry-based labs and the inclusion of cross-cutting concepts and leveraging of technology to enhance his students' learning. Over the past two years, Lou has also worked closely with Laura Byrne on redesigning the curriculum assessment and instruction in Principles of Physics to ensure that all students are able to access the concepts of physics at their readiness level. Dr. Hall writes that as principal, "I've truly enjoyed my visits to Lou's classroom as well as our conversations about teaching and learning. Lou is truly an asset to his students, to the Science Department, and to Brighton High School. We're proud and honored to recommend him for tenure." Michelle, unique and special in so many ways. She has a bachelor's degree from SUNY Oswego in public justice and a master's degree in education from Nazareth College of Rochester. She's had a rich history at Council Rock, having served first as a student teacher and then as a regular substitute, and finally as a building substitute both in 2012-13 before landing a probationary position in the 1415 school year. She works incredibly hard to create a supportive environment for her students. She is the constant lifelong learner, seeking every opportunity to learn and grow within her profession. She makes deep connections with each of her students and families. Students are excited while in her class, and she has worked hard to create authentic learning activities that connect with students' lives and motivate them to be promise-towers and critical thinkers. Her kind, calm, supportive demeanor, particularly in the current circumstance, allow the classroom to be a place students feel comfortable taking risks as she works very diligently to create supportive connections and a strong community for her students. In addition, Michelle has thrown herself into our school community. She is a part of several committees, both building and district level, has sought out colleagues to collaborate and learn with as she continues to grow her own professionalism. She's passionate and excited to participate with colleagues in every opportunity presented to her. She completes her probationary period, demonstrating excellence in teaching and leadership, her understanding of students, her own desire to grow and learn in her pedagogy, and her commitment to her students and families are all part of this excellence and why she has been recommended for tenure this evening. I would like to again acknowledge all of you and thank you for coming and for participating in this great celebration of incredible people. Each and every one of them contributing so much to our children, and thank you to all of you and your families for supporting them along the way. We will now take a little bit of a recess also for you to leave. If you'd like, you're welcome to stay for our blueprint updates and a variety of reports. Love to have you, but we also understand that you might want to take a cupcake and run. Have a wonderful evening and thank you again.
Thank you so much. Good evening and welcome back to the continuation of our June 4th Board of Education Business Meeting. We have completed the tenure, teacher tenure recommendations and awarding of certificates and allowed a moment for some photographs in the room to clear. So we now will get back to our agenda and continue on with the evening. We offer the opportunity at this point in time for public participation. Any members of the public that are here with us in attendance that wish to address the board are welcome to do so. We ask that you raise your hand and be recognized. If you have a question or a comment, we ask that you be brief, and I would ask you to step to the podium to give us your name and address. So is there anyone here who wishes to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing that we have no members of the public to do that, we will move on. Tonight, we're going to receive a number of updates, if you will, to our blueprint work, including our diversity and equity committee, restorative practices. So I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan to set up the next few agenda items.
Thank you. So the next step for us is to, is really the last step and the first step to the next part of the process, the ongoing strategic planning that we do in the district, which really has a cycle to it, and we build on, in every step, the step before and look to evaluate our progress and then determine plans for next year. Our long-term plan is essentially one that revolves around priority areas, as you all know, but the community should also understand and have knowledge of. And those priority areas do not have necessarily five-year plans, but an annual plan that's reviewed each year based on our progress, the priorities in any given year, and updated by a committee called the Blueprint Team that meets at the end of June. And that group of community members, staff members, administrators, board members participates in a conversation around the priorities of the district, each of the priority areas, and what the strategy should be to meet our objectives in each area. Then later in the summer, you work with the leadership team to develop action plans, really to nail down the hows and the who and the when for those plans. And the committee in June works really on the whats, the strategies, the bigger picture items. Tonight's reports are an overview of the progress made this year in each of those areas. It's a general overview. The material is posted to the web, and the more detailed reviews, the complex reviews are done actually with the Blueprint Team on last day, coming up at the end of June. This year, it's on the last Friday in June. And again, all the materials are provided publicly and included then those progress updates in next year's blueprint. We keep track of those annually as well. So for us, it's not a five-year plan or even a one-year plan that sits on a shelf, but it's become the foundation, the better, kind of the backbone of all of our committee work and our focused efforts in the district, also for resource allocation. Many of the areas that we've talked about lately, regard to mental health, regard to safety and security, regard to diversity and equity, culturally responsive curriculum, all of the materials that you've been presented with throughout the year, in fact, all tie back to the blueprint. Every single one of the areas that we are working with, it really does guide our work. So tonight's updates, again, are a brief overview of the progress made...
So tonight's updates, again, are a brief overview of the progress made in each of those areas, with more detail to come for the entire team on the planning day. We're going to start out with our priority area regarding diversity and equity. We'll start out, a little bit of a shift in the agenda, we'll do those updates first, that priority area, and then continue with updates for each of the other priority areas. To kick that off is an introduction with our diversity consultant, who has worked with us this year. I like to call him Dr. Doctor, and he is with Dr. Court Stone as well, his colleague who assisted in his work this year, and we appreciate you being here also, Court. I say Dr. Doctor because both of these gentlemen just recently earned doctoral degrees from St. John Fisher in their executive leadership program, but that follows the Reverend Dr. Marlo Washington's previous doctoral degree too. So he sets the record in this room for sure and says he is never going back to school. Always a learner, but he's never going back in the classroom to sit in the desk. He will speak from the front of the room. So Dr. Washington will give us a brief overview and an update on his work, and then introduce each of the subcommittee chairs, which is Lou, Debbie, Carolyn, and I'll start that workout also, give you an update on restorative practices from the leadership team as well. Marlo?
You make me laugh all the time. I just want to first and foremost say to members of the board, to Mr. Kokonovich and members of the board, and to Dr. Kevin McGowan, it's just been a pleasure to serve and work with each of you and with the administration, serving in the capacity as the diversity consultant along with Dr. Court Stone. And it's just, we've learned a lot. We've learned a lot. It's been incredible. It's been impactful. It's been exciting. There's been a lot of stories and narratives that has not been exciting, as we confronted a lot of things and a lot of people that have shared their stories and their narratives. And as a result of that, we documented it as much as we can. So like Dr. Kevin said, that we are, what we're doing, we're just providing tonight just a brief, very, very brief overview, really of the dynamic work of three incredible individuals who have really led this project. And later in June, we'll elaborate more fully and go from there. But the work of the Diversity and Equity Committee really has been spurred by the three subcommittees. Family Engagement with Dr. Debbie Baker, Carolyn Robidoux with the Special Education, and Lou Alamo of Hiring Practices. These three dynamic subcommittees, as a result of their work, there have been some sub-subcommittees that were created to continue furthering the blueprint and the updates of the blueprint and really trying to figure out how do we go ahead and forge ahead beginning in the next school year. And so this work has been dynamic. I want to call your attention before I introduce the subcommittee chairs. In your report that I've issued today, on page one, what I wanted just to highlight very briefly is how the conversations for the future of diversity and equity has been very, very tremendous and very, very high. As a result of that, we've met with the public, and on page 20, in terms of my engagement with the public, we've met with over 112 individuals and sat with them a lot at Starbucks and just really engaged with these individuals in the work of diversity and equity as well as facilitating with the greater overall Diversity and Equity Committee. And so those work in and of itself has helped produce this report, which you now have and which we will continue to dive further. So I just want to just say as also a point of personal privilege to thank you for entrusting us. Thank you for entrusting Dr. Stone and myself and for believing in us to really go forward in delivering a qualitative understanding and really qualitative look at the entire aspect of diversity, equity, inclusion in the district and begin to try to develop a plan and further support the blueprint. It's really been a great privilege. It's been a great, great privilege to serve and be the servants in this particular type of work. And so as we continue to go forward and work together and go ahead, you'll hear more from the report in more in-depth and in detail. So I'm going to shut up and allow the three subcommittee chairs to come forward and make their presentation. And by the way, this report reflects their work. So this report is centered on the three subcommittee chairs and their work and how we've all pulled this together in that dynamic. So I would say, and plus, in addition to that, the Curriculum Council and the leadership also will be part of that. So, and one last thing, tomorrow, as a result of the work that they've done, we will be honored tomorrow at the Town of Brighton Chamber of Commerce and to receive an award. So it's just a constant testimony of the work that they have done and shared and poured their spirit into this. So I guess Dr. Debbie's here, so we'll have...
Dr. Kevin McGowan. Watch your back blank there. Thank you.
So thank you very much, Marlo. First of all, I'm not sure that I had the right words to express how grateful we are for Marlo's work, for his connection to children and families, his work as an ombudsman, his work in helping people tell their story and helping us better understand everyone's story, helping us connect better with families, helping us reach out further than we've reached before, and in serving administrators, staff members, many, many families, committees. Marlo's been all over the place, not just at Starbucks. He's been everywhere. And personally also, his wise counsel, his advice, his perspective has been so valuable to me personally, and again, I thank you very much and thank you for all the work you've done.
Kevin, if I could, and I apologize for interrupting, but I want to capture it before you move on from those very kind words for Marlo and for Court. I do want to share on behalf of the Board of Education, you know, this was a very unique year in the Brighton Central School District in so many ways. And much of the topical work that we're going to review right now and briefly review and feed, we have been working on in multiple different ways, but your aspect of Marlo of coming into the district this year to lead that effort and bring it all together under the first year of the Diversity Equity Committee, you know, we thank you very sincerely because not only for devoting the time, but you brought a perspective, a personality, a way to look at things, a way to go about things that we really did not have. I think I will always appreciate the value of the question or the comment, "Tell me more," that you have brought to us from the very beginning. And the aspect of, is everyone at the table? Who's missing from this discussion? Who's missing from this table? Very early on in the discussion, those were two things that you hit home on and will always take away from that and be embedded. So I do want to thank you on behalf of the board for your devotion to the work this year. So thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging that. So in addition to the three areas that Debbie, Lou, and Carolyn will dig into with you, so Family Engagement, Hiring Practices, and Special Education, we began a conversation last year also about our own discipline practices, acknowledging that there was a disproportionality in the discipline of students of color relative to non-students of color, and really understanding, you know, what were the reasons for that disproportionality? What should we be looking at differently? What other strategies should we be employing? And so discipline practices were mentioned last year, the previous year, by the Diversity Equity Committee, and we had a conversation about that disproportionality, but it didn't rise immediately to the top of the three areas that the committee wanted to focus on going into 1819. However, the leadership team looked at that work and thought that we as a team could take that area on separate from the committee, really understanding because that's primarily the practice of the leadership team, that us studying our own practice was often important, digging far into that conversation, and making that a focus for our leadership team meetings throughout the year would be an important step. So our charge was to review equity and cultural responsiveness with regard to discipline practices, and there were four action steps involved in that work. We said that the leadership team would research discipline data in order to better understand equity issues with regard to discipline for all student groups. The leadership team would review current practices and make recommendations for change in practice going forward. The leadership team will research restorative justice programs formally while continuing to utilize informal restorative practices previously instituted, and ongoing updates will be provided to the Diversity and Equity Committee. Two areas that I want to focus on with you because those regular updates did happen and the previous practices did continue to be implemented, but the two primary areas to mention to you again briefly was the first around researching discipline data to understand our issues within the treatment of all students. We found discrepancies in both the quantity and types of consequences between white students and students of color. We noticed subjectivity of the coding system identifying one of the particular issues with regard to this, and we updated that coding system and aligned practices. And so what does this mean in more layman terms? There are areas of the discipline practice that we know were subject to perhaps implicit bias. In our review of our data and our work with teachers and looking at the administrative practices, we did not feel as though those practices were racist and intentionally racist towards particular groups of students, but certainly acknowledged that our work was subject to implicit bias. For example, insubordination or disrespectful behavior as codes in the discipline system are absolutely subjective codes. One person's version of insubordination and disrespect is not necessarily another person's version. And in any given circumstance, our interpretation of somebody being insubordinate or disrespectful can be subject to our own implicit bias. So it's something we acknowledged as a team, that we needed to think through that, that our cultural responsiveness needed work, and we needed to acknowledge how our own biases could impact our interpretation of one's behaviors. And so trying to move away from some of those more subjective discipline codes and to be coding referrals based simply on very clear, concrete acts was the first step in trying to understand the discrepancy and if there was different treatment of students. The other issue we noticed was that when we began to look at referrals and make that determination around whether we saw implicit bias or racist treatment, et cetera, was that when a discipline referral was coded with six or seven different codes, right? So not only were you tardy, but you were also insubordinate, you were disrespectful, it was very hard to break down what was the root cause, what was the actual act that somebody was being disciplined for? Was it just insubordination or was it the other, more concrete, visible, and clear act? So missing a class, being tardy, engaging in a fight, possession of drugs or alcohol, those items are very clear. And so we were able to dig into that a lot further and do case studies. And through that case study analysis, you know, we certainly discovered that that was something, being more concrete and more clear in those instances was really very, very important. So again, that was the first step. But then also understanding that certainly, you know, this was an issue, but also administration or application of the system sometimes was based on who was applying the code of conduct. So again, we did not find, and I want to keep being clear about this, we did not find that people were in any ways intentionally biased, in any ways particularly racist towards one group or another. We did not find any of those patterns, despite the fact that there's disproportionality. When we studied the individual acts in administration by particular administrators, assistant principals, what we found though was sometimes there was inconsistency from one assistant principal to the next. And not, again, intentionally, but really seeing that there was a need to make sure that we were pretty clear and pretty consistent in the work. And so it encouraged a lot of really good discussions between teams of administrators, making sure they were applying and interpreting acts the same way, and then applying that discipline code again. Became then easier and I think much more meaningful in terms of studying whether these discrepancies exist for other reasons. And I give so much credit to the middle school team and the high school team for really digging into that and having great conversations among each other about how they were applying the code of conduct and understanding their level of consistency in that. Again, revise the code system as well and align their own practices to make sure they were more consistent. Finding throughout that process that they were, are feeling very fair, very appropriate in that work, and again, supporting student growth. We're not a retributionable system. It's much more focused on the idea of growth, support for students, and finding ways to positively interact to build better behavior over time. But we found that there are areas that we could continue to work on. But what we also found in that conversation about those discrepancies is what kind of growth do you really experience from a suspension? When you remove somebody from the school environment, really what does that do? How does that teach a lesson, so to speak? How does that keep students engaged? Is that a positive practice, or is there more that we could be doing? So previously, we saw restorative practices being implemented already in a lot of pockets and a lot of pilot programs, right, those that are trained at the high school and the middle school level. But we made an effort to do even more and propose in most situations to start in that place, to do restorative practices, lots of peer circles, lots of mediation, lot of conflict resolution, and combine that with more traditional methods at the same time, focused on this idea of accountability in the school environment and the responsibility we have to all learners in the school environment, but also personal growth and changing behavior over time, kind of the counseling, social, emotional learning perspective of that. So those pilot programs and where that was working, we expanded that work and found that to be very successful. We also transitioned anecdotally to far more in-school suspensions from out-of-school suspensions, keeping kids focused during the day and engaged in the school environment, that giving also more opportunity for counseling and restorative practices if kids are here and not out-of-school suspended. We'll be able to report out as the year ends what those changes have been and what those results have been in very measurable ways. So restorative practice programs have been researched. In fact, we mentioned to you before that we spent a great deal of time focusing in our collaboration with the New York City Department of Public Education on their very successful implementation of restorative practices, came home actually with materials from New York City and watched this happen in action and really learned quite a bit from that experience. So we've researched programs and strategically planned for them to be implemented next year. We will be recommending that to the Blueprint Committee and looking at code of conduct revisions, which are a board matter, in fact, in August, where there will be a public hearing, and we'll plan this implementation to go on throughout the 1920 and 2021 school year and then beyond. So we're looking forward to providing a lot more details as those plans are further developed. Any questions before I turn it over to the next section? Okay. Dr. Debbie Baker to talk about family engagement. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Yes, so my particular subcommittee of the Diversity and Equity really looked at family engagement. We know, we recognize how crucial family engagement is. We value the partnership that we have with our families, and so we really wanted to make sure that as a district, we were doing everything we possibly can to make sure that families feel welcome, that make sure families, again, feel that they can be in partnership with us in their students or in their children's learning. So specifically, what we were tasked to do was take a look at our current family engagement practices as they relate to accommodating all families. And we know that we have historically a number of families that are new to the district. We have a higher annual population. It continues to grow over the last few years, and we want to make sure that, again, that all of our families feel included. We wanted to ask families of underrepresented groups how they felt about our current practices. We wanted to find parent mentoring programs to see what that might look like, and then develop a district family engagement plan. The group met monthly in addition to the larger Diversity Equity Committee itself, and here's what we ended up kind of finding. We did a survey, we actually did multiple surveys. Each year in the fall, if you're new to the district, you know you are invited to a reception, that kind of pizza and, you know, pizza and soda type of a gathering. The purpose is to not only allow new families to get to know one another, but to get to meet us, to get to know us as a district. And so we took that and used that as an opportunity to survey those families, just to kind of query as far as how welcome they felt, were there any things that we could be doing differently that would help them feel, like I said, more assimilated into our work. In addition, Marlo, Dr. Washington, when he was working through the Be the Healing, as well as some of the interactions that he had with families, was also providing us with information and areas of need. We also surveyed our English as a New Language families, and then we also did a survey with our parents of color group. Again, just really trying to cast a wide net to get as much input as we possibly Again, just really trying to cast a wide net to get as much input as we possibly can. And what we found was, A, I guess it's good, our registration process is smooth, you know, we take kind of pride in that. But much more importantly, families feel from a communication standpoint, they overwhelmingly said, "We communicate well," right? We communicate at families. We have newsletters, we have emails, we have, you know, multiple avenues for which parents can get information. But where they felt that we really could do, you know, look a little bit deeper and maybe make some improvements was this interaction, this interactive piece. And really, as I said, you know, I don't want to continue to say this, but really engage them. And so, specifically what they were saying, particularly our families that were new to the district, they were saying that at times they had a hard time kind of assimilating into the Brighton culture, that there are many of our families that have been here for a very long time, which is fabulous, but to sometimes get into that group is a little bit more difficult. The other area of need that we have is the providing of translated materials, both on the fly, you know, at parent, at parent teacher conferences and open houses, but also written format as well. And I know, and I can speak to that a little bit in a minute. As a district, that really has been an ongoing work that we have. As you can imagine, right now, we have, I think at last count, 35 different languages spoken across the district. And while we celebrate that and it's fabulous, it's not always easy to get translated materials in a really timely fashion. So, it's something that we, like I said, we really need to pay attention to. So, recommendations coming out of this. And I guess I would say to you, there's a lot more to this, you know, and kind of trying to be succinct, as Kevin mentioned, we'll be giving and sharing much more of the detail of our process and what we found at the Blueprint Committee. But in a nutshell, our seven recommendations really revolve around working with the PTSA to create a family mentorship program, really looking at, again, our families, to see if there's families that we can, that we can tap into the district to help us with those translation, you know, with those, with those kind of real-time translation needs that we have. We want to support the creation of a family liaison position. This would be different than an actual parent mentorship person in that, and I kind of jokingly said, this is much of the old Marlo play, in that, you know, it's a person that perhaps the families can come to and kind of help to interpret or translate or, you know, be that liaison, that conduit to some of the work going on in the school. We also thought it was important to identify any barriers that might exist through childcare, transportation, language, any flexible times of some of our public events, open houses, parent teacher conferences, et cetera. And then make efforts to move those conferences, those timings of those whenever possible, into times that are more convenient for our families. We know our families are working, you know, not only during the day, but also many are working in the evenings as well. And to try to figure out how we can best meet them in times where it's convenient for them is really, really important. One of the areas that we started to take a look at, but we didn't have a whole lot of time, was this idea of funds of knowledge. Funds of knowledge is a term that's used by some scholars, researchers in the field that really talk about the funds or the skills and the attributes of a given family and given children and what they bring into the classroom. And so, one of the things that we would like to do is task Curriculum Council to look into that, to see what aspects might we be able to take advantage of that would help our families to be more connected. And then also, we recognize that there's professional development implications to this work, that, you know, teachers, that teachers need assistance and we need help and training on what are the best ways to communicate with the families. And so, that's something that we're going to be working to do, is incorporate that into the, some of the other professional development that we are offering. And now, I'm going to turn...
Debbie, quick question.
Sure.
Just start me. Does BOSI's provide any translation services, especially print material?
Yeah.
And are they looking to expand more of that? It would seem to be a natural place that more of that should be going on.
Yeah, I'm really glad you asked that. Thanks, Mark. I mean, yes, we actually contract with BOSI's to provide translation, primarily of written materials. But a couple, you know, a couple barriers to that. First of all, they require a two-week lead time.
Okay.
On anything that's translated, which, okay, that's fine, and sometimes that works for us, but other times...
Document or a plan, but if it's some issue that comes up specifically, that makes it difficult.
Exactly. And lately, because we have some really unique languages, they don't have translators. So, we actually have gone out to private organizations within the community and started to contract them to provide us. The other thing that we started a couple of years ago, we started contracting with a service called Proprio. And Proprio, what it does is it's really on-the-fly translation. So, at any given time, if you picture, you know, a teacher needing to call a parent or a counselor needing to call a parent, they can pick up the phone, obviously type in some codes, and then a translator comes on and they make the connection then to the family translating. So, it just becomes that three-way conversation. And they're available 24/7 and the languages that they have available, I think they're up to like 75 languages now. So, we've really gotten a lot of use out of that particular service. So, again, we started, but we certainly have a long way to go when it comes to providing these kinds of materials.
Also, when, back in December, we had some conversations with people about a computer program that was doing that kinds of, kind of translating. Have you gotten any more information about that?
Just dipping our toe in the water. It's actually called Microsoft Translator.
Yeah.
And so, right now, our annual teachers are kind of piloting that. They keep it on their phones and it does what you, exactly what you, you know, what you would think. You launch the app, you can either talk into it in English and then select a language that it translates into, vice versa. It actually types out, you know, written, written conversation as well. And so, they're just, you know, trying to figure out from a technology standpoint, because I'll tell you, technology is great. I mean, you know me, I'm all about the technology. But for instance, one of the things we found with Google Translator is it's not really always accurate. And sometimes we've had parents come to us and say, "You know what? Don't bother." That this is really just not even close to what I think you probably were trying to say. So, I mean, every, you know, the technology is continually improving and we keep, you know, we keep trying.
It was, it was promoted as being better than the other product.
Okay.
Was that just a sales pitch?
It's relative.
English to Spanish, it's there.
There you go. Awesome.
All right. I was just wondering, what are, what are the top three other languages that they speak here in Brighton, other than English?
Other than what? Other than English? Yeah. Chinese, Urdu, and then I believe the other one, but I'm not completely sure, actually is Hindu, but I'm not sure. Okay.
Interesting. Fascinating, really. Thank you, Debbie. Welcome, Carolyn.
Good evening. Uh, the, the area that I worked on with a huge group of people, wait a minute, I always do this wrong, with a huge group of people is looking at our special education programming. And if you look at all the people on this group, imagine how many people were on the whole Diversity Committee and the conversations that were happening throughout this year. It was quite an adventure. We took on a lot. When we started talking about special education and diversity, there were a lot of people with lots of opinions about, and lots of vision and views about where we should go and what we should talk about. So, it took us a while to really hear everybody and to focus and hone in on where we wanted to be. We actually met early in the morning at 7:00. We met from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We met one evening from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We, we had all different timeframes, so the people on the committee were able to come, the parents were able to be a part of this group as much as we possibly could. So, I want to thank everybody. They really put a lot of time into this. The goal, after really talking with the group, the goal of the Special Education Committee was to look and formulate a plan to create an equitable and unbiased inclusive program. Well, how hard is that, right? Where it's really, we're looking at a huge idea for all children and their families in the district, for children who are currently in special education and for children who may be looking at getting into special education. What does that look like and how are we looking at being the most equitable and unbiased and inclusive program possible? And in order to achieve this, this state of unbiased inclusive education, we started talking about looking at the disparities in our current numbers. And we looked at a lot of data and we actually had to, we looked at data from School Tool, we looked at data from our IEP Direct, and we compared the two systems and we had lots of conversation and looking at how we use both of those pieces of data to make some determinations. We finally, in thinking about how we're working through inclusive and diversity, really focusing in on our African-American students and the number of African-American students who are classified, and what does that look like within our general population? And here's some of the data that we looked at. We saw that the total district African-American students at that time was 248 students, 7% of our population. 17% of our special education population is African-American. So, what does that mean? Those numbers were concerning to us. They, they brought around a lot of questions. We asked a lot of questions. And as you can see, there were, these are just some of the other data that we found with disproportionality. We found that we have more males that are classified, that other health impairment is our biggest classification, and 75% of those classified as other health impaired are males. And so, that brings about a lot of questions. We decided to really focus coming up into this next school year on our African-American population. So, looking into 2019, 2020, what do we want to look at? We want to acknowledge the depth of unconscious bias and the role it plays in how students are educated and classified, and really dig much deeper into the disproportionality of African-Americans classified students in Brighton. Look at that in Brighton, look at that in neighboring districts and look at that nationwide and start to look at the research and some of the other data to see how that might inform our practice moving forward. Looking toward the future beyond 2020, some of the things that we talked about, we're creating a Special Education Advisory Council, getting a group of people together from all different walks of life to kind of look at how we deliver services and what types of things we want to do for our kids. These are just some of the ideas that people came up with. And then, moving forward and making some recommendations based on our findings. This is a huge project and just looking into one year at a time, really digging deep into that one piece of data. So, it's our hope that by examining our current and future data, gathering all of these things together, we will facilitate a deeper understanding of our unconscious bias and our disproportionality of African-American students and how it impacts teaching, learning and relationships with all of our families throughout the district. So, it's a, it seems like a little piece of data, but it was a huge conversation that really took us a long time to come to a consensus on how to move forward. Any questions?
Thank you, Carol. And we welcome Lou for his piece on this particular topical area, the Blueprint.
Good evening. First off, I wanted to start by thanking Dr. Washington and Dr. Stone and Renee Baker, who were tremendous help to me personally in helping me facilitate this particular, this particular work. Their advice throughout the process was, was pretty simple. They told me, "Be real, be truthful on where we are and be sincere in where we want to be." So, those kind of guiding principles were just really helpful in setting off, having difficult conversations and laying out an action plan, which I'm prepared to present for you tonight. So, thank you very much. So, our charge, our charges were developed by the, by the Subcommittee. Renee Baker, who specialized in diversity recruitment at the higher education level, helped us form these charges and formalize these, these charges. And we looked at it as, as a really interconnected triangle of looking at environment, retention and recruitment. And we quickly realized as a committee that we can't just focus on one piece. We can't just look at recruitment, because if we're successful in that, we're not going to be ready for the next piece. So, we really needed to look at all three pieces of the triangle simultaneously and develop an action plan. So, these are our charges. And the best way I thought to illustrate the scope of work is this metaphor, as Debbie corrected me, looking at, commonly used in organizational behavior courses. So, this really starts at the tip of the iceberg. So, when we're at the recruiting piece of it, what are candidates gonna, gonna look at? What are they gonna see when they look at our website? Who's gonna be visiting them at the, at the career fairs? Who's gonna be engaging them in conversations? What does it look like at the, at the highest level? And then, once they come into our system and they're, they're part of our, our school communities, part of our team, what's the, the rest of the iceberg, the 90% of the iceberg? Are they gonna be successful? Are they gonna feel comfortable here? Are they confident? Are they gonna be, you know, feel that they have potential to grow in their career? So, our committee looked at really the entire iceberg and tried to put together a, you know, beginning level action plan to, to meet our objectives. So, it starts, again, if you think of that iceberg, starts at the top and we always hear a tone at the top. So, one of the first things that the Recruitment Committee Subcommittee developed and adopted for recommendation is the commitment statement. So, this is gonna be front and center on all of our recruiting materials and all of our hiring materials. And the, the middle paragraph is the most important. I'll just read that, just, just for references. "The Brighton Central School District seeks candidates for faculty and staff positions that are eager to make Brighton an even more diverse and inclusive district for its students to thrive within. A range of backgrounds and perspective leads to a variety of ideas, knowledge and approaches, and we believe that a deep understanding and valuing of differences is necessary to our overall mission." So, again, starting at the top of the iceberg, what are people gonna see here from Brighton as a, as an organization, as a, as a corporation trying to recruit talented individuals? This is gonna be our commitment statement. So, then, I keep using the term playbook, because I was so fortunate to work with some talented individuals on the committee, leaders really from, from different industries, across, across industries. And I can, I can say proudly, we did not have any wallflowers on our committee. They were engaged, they rolled up their sleeves, they, they, you know, they put us, they set the, they didn't, they weren't wallflowers. They were really aggressive and were asking great questions and they were challenging us to, "Let's get something done here." They didn't want to hear talk, they didn't want to hear, you know, this is what we want to hear, philosophical ideas. These were go-getters and I, and I just so appreciate that. Again, I'm just so proud to be part of, of that team. So, this is what we, this is what we developed. This is our playbook. And they were acted as, you know, assistant head coaches, developing these plays, drawing from all the different industries. So, we first identified what the environment attributes, what we desired to be, how we were gonna go about getting there through action plans and timetables. And then, we were very thoughtful about how are we gonna know when we're obtaining, or we're achieving some successes? How are we gonna know when we get there? So, that was our thought process in form of leading our deliverable, which we'll give to the Board of Education, the Blueprint, which we're really proud of, for everyone to read. We don't want to publicize this too much, because we don't want to show our competitors how to, how to do all the great work that, that we're embarking on. So, this is just an example of a playbook or something you'll see in our, in our deliverable to the Board of Education and to Dr. McGowan. So, first, and again, you think about that, the iceberg, the tone at the top, policy, mission, vision clearly stated. What would be some action plans and timetables to adopt and promote an equity, diversity and inclusion statement on all postings? This is an example of an action plan. Again, more at the, the top of the iceberg, artifacts, photos, artwork, communication. So, if you think about the hiring process, so there's the recruitment process, then we're inviting people in for interviews and tours, and then we're gonna invite them in for screening interviews, we're gonna invite them in for committee interviews. What's gonna be the experience of that candidate? That's what the group was, was looking at. What's gonna be the experience of the candidate? What are we gonna be, how are we gonna prove to them that we're serious about our, our mission and our commitment statement? And then, just another example, district will engage in continuous recruitment of diverse candidates and specifically candidates of color, being very purposeful about our overall objective, that we, we desire to have our faculty that mirrors the diversity of our, of our students demographically and, and in every, in every manner. So, again, some playbooks, action plans, timetables, and then the evidence of success. Again, we were really thoughtful about defining those evidence of success. And both of it, both is, some is quantifiable, some is qualitative. Feedback from prospective candidates, committees and employee groups, creating a feedback circle. And then, some specifics, number of candidates with, number of contacts with prospective candidates, so developing databases of referral forms. How often are we gonna keep in touch with people? Make sure that they're engaged and they're looking at us when they're considering new employment opportunities. Success in hiring candidates of color and percentage of... Success in hiring candidates of color and percentage of teachers of color compared to the percentage of students of color. Again, as a, as a defined metric. And then growth metrics. So where we are today, and how are we growing over, over the years to come? Growth in the number of applicants, growth in the number of candidates forwarded to committee interview, and growth in the number of candidates hired. All metrics that the committee is interested, was interested in defining, and then holding the district accountable to seeing. Are you doing what you said you were gonna do? And that's our, our commitment with this, with this playbook recommendation. So again, just thank you to the committee members. I had a great team, and I couldn't be more proud of, of the work that we were all able to, to present. Questions on hiring practices?
Thank you, Lou. And before we move into the full blueprint updates and have everybody come through, again, again, in the, in the realm of thanks, each of you did, but I think as a board, we want to thank the members of the community, residents and parents mostly, who chose to serve on these three different subcommittees, basically over, on the overall diversity, equity, inclusion group this year. I mean, we did, we did have a wide array of viewpoints and professional and personal experiences involved, and it really helped facilitate the work. It helped the conversation around the tables. I was on Lou's committee on hiring, and then we had furthered three subcommittees, and we had really valuable discussion and conversation, not only when we were together in rooms, and I know the other board members, I think, would say the same thing on the other committees, but also the feedback through the one-note process and email process in between subcommittee meetings. So we make sure we wanna, I wanted to make sure we acknowledged those members of the community, along with all of our staff and administrators, because it made the work better and richer, you know, from that engagement. So we'll now restart with Dr. Baker again for the flu, the full blueprint update planning portion, I guess we could call it.
Well, there are definitely some crosshairs, some intersectionality happening here. Tonight, I'm going to give the board and the community updates on what my oversight areas, which were in the area of rigorous coursework, as well as technology and its use and integration across all of our classrooms. Specifically this year, in the blueprint, there were three main goals that we achieved or that we, that we tackled. And these were tackled primarily through curriculum council. As the board knows, curriculum council is a representative body of not only all of our K-12 educators, its parents, its Board of Education members, its students. And really, each year, we tackle, you know, either an individual topic or a few topics that tend to then inform what ends up happening in our curriculum, in our classrooms, and curriculum and instruction. So this year, specific to the blueprint, we looked at our grading goal, and I'll explain a little bit more about that as I get to that point. We looked at our acceleration in advanced coursework and some of the efforts that were currently underway with regards to increasing participation in those courses. And then, and this is where the intersectionality comes in. And then there was a group that studied culturally responsive teaching practices, which I'll get into in just a second. And then the last area that we had a group really looking at was in our area of instructional technology. Specifically, and Mark, I think you were on this group, this group was tasked with assessing the impact the technology has had. We're into our fifth year of technology deployment, and at this point in time, we really needed to step back and say, what's working? What do we need to be doing differently? And what do we need to do to make sure that we're going forward in the most thoughtful way? So starting off with culturally responsive instructional practices, a little bit about this work. It started last year at the council, really taking a look at kind of broad brushstrokes. What did this really mean? You know, how do we build cultural competence amongst our staff that would then infuse itself into our practices, into our instructional practices? And we realized that it was really multifaceted. It wasn't just about updating our curriculum to make sure that it was unbiased, but rather, and, and contained aspects of cultural sensitivity, but rather, some of the resources that we were using. We also knew that we needed to make sure that we created those lenses within that particular regulation. And then the last area that this group tackled was thinking about the professional development of our staff. I mentioned a few minutes ago, professional development is really the mechanism that we have for improving what happens in our classroom in a direct sort of way. You know, teachers work incredibly hard, continually, like improving their practice, honing their craft, and we need to make sure that what we're teaching them, and what we're helping them to learn, and the practices that we're trying to support really are aligned to the research and what best practice says should be happening. So specific, as I said, one of the things that we tackled with regards to our regulation adoption is we updated it with elements or lenses, if you will, of cultural sensitivity, cultural responsiveness, and bias. This updated regulation will be used moving forward whenever that we have a textbook that's under review, or materials in general. And again, the board has been, you know, very receptive and has approved textbooks numerous, you know, on numerous occasions. And so you'll be starting to see within the write-up, within the recommendations, commentary and evaluation on these particular aspects. With regards to the responsiveness of the curriculum, we developed, the group developed a mini-course, if you will. What this mini-course is designed to do is introduce teachers to the idea of culturally responsive practice. We vetted some video. There's some reading that they'll be doing, as well as looking at, there were some tools that we located to help them, like I said, to vet some of their curriculum. This particular mini-course will be used this summer and then into the future, anytime teachers engage in curriculum development. And we're pretty excited about this, because this really will represent somewhat of a standardization of the messaging, to make sure that all teachers really have, you know, are doing this work in a very thoughtful, culturally responsive way. And then, with respect to the summer professional development, it is a particular point of pride for us as far as what's gonna end up happening. This summer, we have professional development that we're offering. We're offering it three separate times throughout the year, I mean, I'm sorry, throughout the summer. And teachers can select from one of those times, or if they choose not to come in the summer, we'll be offering something similar in the fall. And it's a kind of a differentiated approach, if you will, in that we'll start the day with a plenary provided by Dr. Javon Hunter from Buffalo State, really taking a look at this notion of windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors, a metaphor that is being currently used in this field, to really start to think about how we're providing students with opportunities to see themselves in what we teach, as well as to see others, and then to engage and enter into a connection between those two. We're then offering eight breakout sessions that you can see listed here, that our faculty can choose from. And again, what we know is that because we've been engaging in this work for about two years now, everybody's at a different place. We've got multiple entry points. So we wanted to make sure that we had, we had offerings that would then, that would then service or provide people with kind of thoughtful, thoughtful instruction based upon where their current set is. And then, our goal is then to take these topics and move them into ongoing professional development throughout next year. So with respect to specific recommendations to the Board of Education and the Blueprint Committee, it would be to adopt the updated regulation and require its use for any new textbook purchases, incorporate the use of at least the first two modules of the mini-course into all curriculum design work, and provide ongoing professional development in culturally responsive teaching and learning practices. Moving to our grading goal, the board might recall that a few years ago, it adopted a philosophy for grading that again, had been developed by the council. Specifically, what the philosophy does, and it's available on our website, but it really tasks us to take a look at our grades with respect to academic and non-academic types of behaviors. Because philosophically, we believe that a grade should reflect an actual achievement, not necessarily a non-academic. But that left a conundrum, if you will, in that how do we then evaluate or at least provide opportunities for students to get feedback on these non-academic behaviors? So this group was tasked with codifying the language around that. It started, we, they started with looking at the habits of mind language that has been used pervasively throughout Council Rock for at least three, four years now. And Council Rock, as you know, or hopefully you know, has recently been recognized as an international habits of mind school. So it made sense that we start there, because that's the language the students are learning at a very young age. And our hope and goal is that they will continue to learn and use that language as they move up, up in through the years. And so what this group did was they actually designed, they designed a rubric, and they designed a system for taking a look at those non-academic behaviors. We think about those almost in many ways as those effort kinds of grades. But anyway, to help students understand what it is, you know, what it means to be an active learner who's persistent and a contributing member of society. So the recommendations for kindergarten through 5th grade is to work with the grading committee to start to incorporate that language into the report cards. At TCMS, we're asking that their report card committee start to look and think about what that might look like, what it might look like to report for non-academic behaviors. And the same thing at the high school, really start to task the PLT to begin exploring habits of mind and begin thinking, as the students move up, what are the implications for, for our students as a whole? And then last, but certainly not least, we'd like to get some feedback from parents, because we know that this is a topic that's near and dear to them as well. In advanced accelerated coursework, there weren't any specific actions, but rather just ongoing actions that were started a couple of years ago with regards to looking at the, our enrollments in not only our accelerated math, but also our AP and honors classes. And a year ago, we updated our referral form for math for acceleration. The board might recall that I presented it about at that time. We offered a pre-AP course targeting some students who may not normally take an AP course. We offered this in the summer to help ensure their success in AP courses. And then we also increased or maintained our AP offerings that were directly targeting students who may not take a course otherwise. AP Computer Science Principles, AP Psych, AP Stats, and then new next year will be our new AP Geography course. So how are we doing? Well, if you take a look here, we're, we're pretty pleased with, with, I guess, the progress, not necessarily with the results. We certainly aren't done. But if you look at the number of our students who are graduating right now with one or more AP courses, we have, you know, we've increased our percentage from 70 to 71%, but I think more importantly, for me, is the number of African American students that we have, the seniors with one or more AP courses. We went from a 22% to 44% of our African American students who are graduating with one, at least one AP under their belt. You can see white seniors, students who are white, we went from 68% to 73%. Our Asian seniors, 85, we dipped down a little bit to 83. And Hispanic seniors went from a 44% of all students who are Hispanic to now 50% of that population are leaving us with one AP course. And then our multiracial students, our seniors, we're now at 100%, although caveat, that is a very small number of students. The other award picture that I included down in the bottom, this was really hot off the presses, that I believe it's Lindsay Hadzema, one of our math teachers at the high school, has been offering Computer Science Principles, and just last week was recognized with a diversity award by the college board because of the number of female students within the class. And we were pretty excited about that.
Can we just stop for a minute, say that's really cool? Congratulations to everybody involved.
Brand-new course, took it on, made it happen, wrote it, I mean, really did everything to get that happen. And I will just say, with many students who would not have been previously identified for an AP course as well, working with, you know, a variety of students in several programs that are involved in that. So when I say not identified, I'm not speaking of female diversity, I'm saying the learning diversity within the program has been significant, and a really, really impressive effort on Lindsay's part and the department to make that happen, so thank you.
Definitely hats off to them, for sure. In the area of technology, we're moving along, as I said. One of the main focuses this year of the Curriculum Council subgroup was to assess the impact of technology. And full disclosure, this slide does not do justice to the amount of work this team did. They actually engaged in a national survey, because we wanted to have data to compare ourselves to, the, what they call the Project Tomorrow Speak-Up. One of the nice things about that particular survey is it really asked a variety of individuals, parents, teachers, students, all the way down, I believe to 3rd grade, about their behaviors about technology, their feelings about technology, their use with technology. And so as I said, I've just kind of really just touched the surface of kind of what they found. What we found with regards to our Brighton parents, they really see themselves as partners within this digital journey that we're on, but they're concerned about screen time. And we see that over and over, appearing within their responses. With regards to the teachers, they are seeing a very positive impact with regards to the utilization of technology, particularly as it relates to equitable issues, access to content, their abilities to personalize learning. But one of the things that they really are worried about is, they are not worried about, but they're trying to find a balance between how much technology is enough versus how much technology is too much. And that really speaks to the whole screen time conversation as well. And as far as the students, the students are really enjoying increase in collaboration, those opportunities, they're enjoying the hands-on projects, but they too have said, they, you know, there are times when they like interacting one-on-one with, with other students and don't need the computer. And so again, it's really in an effort to try to find a balance there. Recommendations, we, with regards to the entire body of what we, that this week was tasked to do, we need to start taking a look at our 6th and 7th grade access to technology, making sure that we have adequate devices for those students to use. I want to make a point, we are not looking at all about going one-to-one 6th and 7th grade. Please, no, that's not even on the equation. But we have some power-using teachers now who are checking out those laptop carts, and they're kind of in their classrooms, and nobody else can get a hold of them. So we're trying to figure out, again, where, where we need to land on that. Screen time is something we are going to continue be looking at into the future. Professional development, people are asking for ongoing professional development. We are developing a cadre of teachers now who are really doing some positive things in their classrooms, and they're opening up their doors to invite. Digital citizenship, we need to continue looking at ways that we're fostering that, we're teaching that, and then we're also holding students accountable for those expectations. And then we also know from our parents that they also would like professional development. And so Mike Leener is working directly with Mona Zomarsky in Community Education to design that for the fall. And I think that's it. And I was going to mental health. Carolyn?
Thank you, Debbie. Welcome back, Carolyn.
Hello. I guess Debbie really does a lot.
People have no idea, she stays under the, she tries to stay under the radar, and we try to acknowledge her at every committee meeting when there's parents in the room to let them know what's going on.
It's crazy, it really is. So this year, we were looking at the mental health pieces. There were actually four things that, and as I reviewed through this, four things that we were piloting this year. We were taking a look at, there are four new projects that we took on to see, does this make sense here in Brighton, and what does this look like? So I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on how those pilots went and where we want to go in the future with this. The first one that we were looking at was this co-vitality social emotional screener. This was a financial investment to, per student, and we started looking at 1,000 students and giving them this 10-minute screener. And if the student took this screener, the family received a letter explaining that we were doing this as a pilot. This is, as it says up here, is a grounded and extensive research on positive youth development. It features a social emotional health survey. It's a comprehensive set of assessment tools and insight into students' mental health. So we gave that to about 1,000 students across the district, and then we took a look at, is this something that seems, that would be worth our investment in time and in dollars and in our students, looking at our, at our students' social emotional development? And what we found, after we finished the survey, and it was reviewed by the mental health staff, and it was reviewed by the administrators, we, we really looked at this and said, is that the data is not really appearing to reveal a lot of information that we don't already know about students. It kind of puts students in categories, students you should be worried about, students that were stable, and it was, it was really all about school behaviors. And there really weren't a lot of students that were coming up on this that we were like, oh, that student needs something different. Not to say that that wasn't, that was 100% the case, but the majority looked like kids that we had identified as either somewhere along the continuum of social emotional health. So in looking and reviewing all of that, we decided that due to the lack of the local trainings, this is a company based out in
trainings, this is a company based out in California, due to the investment in time, due to the investment in dollars, that we would kind of put this aside, put it in the parking lot. Not that it's something that we don't want to investigate later on, but we want to spend more of our time looking at those tier-one social-emotional strategies and invest in those things with our resources. And then maybe at some other time, come back and look at how we're doing. So at this point, that pilot, we said, we're going to put that aside for the moment. One of the other projects that we took on was this second step, social-emotional curriculum. We implemented this with just about 100% fidelity in grades kindergarten through grades, grade 5. Every student received a 30-minute lesson from a mental health staff every single cycle. People pushed into the classrooms, worked with the teachers on this social-emotional curriculum. It promotes school success, school connectedness, lessons on empathy and how to manage emotions and solving problems. I saw several of these lessons throughout the year. They were very well-received by the students, very well-received by the teachers. There has been a learning curve for everybody. But it's definitely something that we feel we want to continue working on in grades K through 5. We also expanded this to the middle school mid-year. We had some teachers who volunteered to do some of these lessons with some of the middle school counselors in their classrooms. We got very good feedback. The teachers who implemented it really thought that the students were very responsive to it. Well, one of the things that we have struggled with at the middle school level is when do we do this for all kids, just because of the way the schedule runs. And because we are going to be looking at restorative practices throughout the district, grades K through 12, we've decided that we would continue second step in grades K through 5, and we would focus on restorative practices in grades 6 through 12. Not to say that those restorative practices would not also be integrated into the lower levels, but the focus will be on the higher levels. And that's a tier-one intervention that we'll use in grades 6 through 12, building that positive culture and community for all kids. So we're really excited. Again, it's interesting to take on these pilots. I mean, they truly are pilots. How is this going to work? What makes the most sense? And there was a lot of conversation and decisions about how we might move forward into the 1920 school year. Something else we took on this year was our Family Navigator. For the 2018-19 school year, we had our Family Navigator for two days per week, and she primarily worked with the middle school and high school. She coordinated referrals from our Genesee Mental Health, another one of our pilots. We had a relationship with Genesee Mental Health where counselors came into our buildings, one at the high school for one day per week and one at the middle school level one day per week. And she also provided one-to-one counseling in grades 6 through 12. We feel that the amount of students that were able to be seen through this program really helped to take some of the load off of our counselors so they can do more tier-one interventions. They can see some of, more of those kids for those college, for career, for your everyday, and not having to run around and deal so much with so many crisis because we're able to have a more service for those kids who have a higher level of need. Moving and reflecting on both of those services and moving into the 1920 school year, we're going to look at this in a little bit of a different way. Again, we're always looking at how to best use our resources, how to best use our people, how to best use our dollars. And coming into the 1920 school year, we're looking at having our Family Navigator five days per week. So an increase with our Family Navigator. And we will be having a decrease, we will not be partnering with Genesee Mental Health going into the new year for a number of reasons that we're not able to come to an agreement with them at this time. But what we will be doing is working with our navigator and administrators to establish counseling relationships with private providers. So looking at a different way of providing that same service and working with all the buildings to enhance their mental health services. Our Family Navigator will now expand K-12, probably spend two and a half days-ish at the high school, and then dividing up the rest of those days between Council Rock, French Road, and the middle school. So we're really, really excited about moving forward with those things. And the last thing that I'm always working on and have been working with is the Wellness Committee for several years. And this year, we continue to talk about wellness and Brighton Breeze and our emotional well-being and healthy eating and physical exercise. And we had a lot of conversation on how to broaden our view and how to look at this in a different way. One of the other things we were charged with was looking at having a common language, K-12. And what, in the evolution of all of conversation throughout the district, we are working toward that restorative language. So that will be the language, K-12, and how we talk to kids, how we restore relationships, how we build community, excuse me, how we build community and culture. So that's something that will be in partnership with the Wellness Committee, but will also be working through the Mental Health Steering Committee and through the restorative practices. So moving into 1920, we are, the committee talked about looking at, how do we just widen our view of wellness? What does it, what else does, what else does it mean other than our healthy eating, our physical exercise? How can we look at this in a different way? So we talked about the science of connection and building bridges with families and really looking at determining our wellness gaps. This summer, the Wellness Committee has decided to get together for a day in the summer to kind of determine what the next steps would be moving forward. And there we go. Any questions?
Thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate that. Thank you for the ongoing, I mean, one of the things we always do is, we do so much pilot work and we try to learn from that. I think your area of expertise, especially so this past year, piloting in a few different areas and figuring out how best to take things forward. So thank you. Lou, welcome back.
Good evening. Again, just a quick update on school safety, the charge and action items, very similar to what was previously presented at our last update. You can see our charge here, which is a challenging charge, given the inherent conflict between opening welcoming environment and safety, safety-related concerns. So we are looking at specifically improving the effectiveness of building safety teams and refine the response to situational annexes. We've done a great job of building principles, have taken the lead on that. We're outlining plans for the summer to take that next step, more scheduling more tabletops in partnership with our first responders, and beginning to merge, really bullets one and two there, with our situational annexes, merging that with our threat assessment protocols and processes. We talked the last time about formalizing those processes, and we foresee an opportunity to build those within the individual building safety plan. So one and two will become one topic going into the next blueprint discussion for the 1920 school year. And then the ongoing action items, monitoring and implementing evolving guidance. So we're actively studying that right now, what's the next level of emergency response, critically looking at our lockdown procedures and evolving guidance, and partnering with our local law enforcement and representative group from our School Safety Committee to operationalize that at each level, making it appropriate for Council Rock, French Road, middle school, and the high school. And obviously, the level of involvement with the students is different at each of those levels. So that's ongoing. We'll be working with Brighton Police on that. We'll also be working with other federal agencies that are weighing in on rolling out the new guidance. Lastly, with the development of a capital plan, what we're proposing is, every five years, we do the building condition survey. What I would recommend, since we have a good relationship with our architects and engineers and there's a refresh from the 2017 Capital Project, what I'd like to roll into the building condition survey is specifically a safety 120 audit. Other districts have conducted those. They've proven to be effective. So we believe we've hit the low-hanging fruit from a facility standpoint, but we're anxious to see how we can develop capital plans, continuously thinking about the evolution of school safety and security. Then I just wanted to touch on our security staffing model. That was a question that came up in the budget process. We had proposed three new positions, so I thought I would take this opportunity to highlight the roles and responsibilities of our school security staff. So looking at the high school, we have six security guards during the school day and two at night. So during the school day, we are covering the two points of entry. The high school has two primary points of entrance. So we have that positioned. Cafeteria is being monitored throughout the course of the day. We have a rover in the hallways. And then we have parking lot exterior. So those are the six positions that we have. And then we have two evening positions, which have been new since the adoption of the blueprint, looking at our after-school activities and having eyes and ears available for our after-school activities. So Mark and Anthony are doing a great job in the afternoon, being those eyes and ears and being able to facilitate some type of safety response should that be warranted. At the middle school, then, our plan for 1920 is to have two full-time guards there, one monitoring the point of entrance, the main entrance way there, and then having a hallway exterior post, which they would rotate throughout the course of the day so that one person is sitting at the main entrance throughout the course of the day. And then we have Joe in the evenings there, that's similarly watching activities, making sure the people are coming in or there for scheduled purposes, also has access to our cameras and can monitor the building throughout the course of the evening. At French Road, this was a position that's being deferred in the budget. We will have one guard there next year, and then we will continue to have Michael in the evening, again, with that same primary role. At Council Rock, because of the construction, we felt it was absolutely essential that we have two full-time people at Council Rock. The bus loop, as we talked about in the improvement plan or in the Capital Project update, will be pushed up. So there'll be construction traffic in the front of the building. There's obviously construction going on in the back, so we want to make sure we have two full-time people there monitoring the exterior and egress, emergency egress routes, things like that. And then Jerry in the evening, again, doing a great job watching activities in the nighttime and being our eyes and ears, working closely with our first responders should something happen. So I just thought I'd take that opportunity to explain the roles and responsibilities of our security staff. Any questions related to school safety, security?
Lou, the high school front entrance work, doors and all that rework or redesign, is that going to be done by September? Is that the plan right now or, right? That's the plan?
Admittedly, it should have been done. We've been having hiccup after hiccup, but that absolutely will be done.
Yeah, no, we had planned, I think, to start it when weather changed and there's a lot of things in play at the front of the building.
That should be done by now. Absolutely should be done by now.
But we're planning, sometime in the, prior to the school opening in September, that whole front will be?
And door 20, too. So we're looking at buzzer systems at both of our primary points of access. We'll have to work out the logistics in door 20, making sure that, you know, the utilization of that security guard is, we're optimizing that so we don't want that person leaving their post, going outside of things. So we have to work through the details of door 20, but we'll make that, we'll make those adjustments as we might have to roll it out and keep making some tweaks to that. But the front entrance way, we have a sound plan for it. I'm confident with the procedures that will be developed.
Okay, thank you.
I'd point out, too, particularly at Council Rock, which is our most vulnerable student population, based on age, there's a ton of time Lou and the team have spent on security over there, working with the neighbors, making sure they're okay with what's going on. So there's been an inordinate amount of time spent over there. Just because the age of that population, obviously, the amount of construction going on over there, but we're also a lot more interactive with the neighbors, keeping them up to pace with everything that's going on. And there's a lot going on for the next couple of years.
Yeah, thank you, Larry. That's a good point. Not only is there a lot going on, and certainly the security needs all around that building and around, but they change. So a routine will only be a routine for a certain period of time, and then something new will occur. So.
Well, the neighbors have pointed out a couple of times before construction started that they'd had some security issues with people walking around. So what we've done has actually added to the level of security over there and sort of helped address that.
Fencing around the whole property.
The other thing I should point out, too, is we've extended the security guards through the summer hours to help monitor activity around the construction sites at French Road with the programming that's over there. We'll have a security guard on staff managing the traffic and all the activity that'll happen there. Certainly at high school, all the work that's going on there, we'll continue to monitor that. And then Council Rock, we're going to extend the security staffing there to just, again, have eyes and ears watching over the site, making sure people are safe, best we can.
Yeah. Okay, that's prudent, I think. Thank you very much, Lou, for that update. Kevin, anything else further at the blueprint updates? All of what we've heard today and a great deal detail behind all of these reports feeds all the next steps, as you've said, it's a perpetual thing. So.
You know, as you can see, first of all, thank you to everybody for their work on this. I think that it's interesting, these were meant to be brief overviews, and believe it or not, they were brief overviews. I mean, the detail presentations and what will happen on the Blueprint Day reveal to an even greater depth that the immense amount of work that's done through the year that people, you know, may not see immediately because they're maybe not on that committee or not a part of this discussion, but that really has such a huge impact on the work that's done each day for our kids. And our staff volunteers a tremendous amount of time to make that happen, and we appreciate that, as do parents. It's really a collaborative effort. Every one of the pieces that were discussed today are the result of a large group of people working on that, you know, from the inception of it and as part of the blueprint plan to the actual committee work to make it happen. So we appreciate that. And I think you'll also see that many of the recommendations and the work this year on Blueprint Day will be an interesting moment for us because a lot of the work discussed will be how to continue the work. So, you know, we will continue to think about continuous improvement and always growing. But this is a little bit of a different year for us in that the initiatives that we are in the midst of are really, really significant, and we haven't arrived. And so.
Multi-step, multi-year, really.
Yeah. Most of this work will be work that we're going to be working with the Blueprint Committee to think about, okay, how do you continue that? How do you institutionalize that as opposed to just implement it? And how do you help that grow? And think about additional ways to enhance the work. But so much of that, we will be recommending to the group and asking for their feedback on how do you just continue the work happening? But it is really, really significant. So, yes, end of June, and as a matter of fact, tomorrow, probably not late tonight, but tomorrow, there will be an email that goes out to the community requesting community volunteers. And people will respond to the community volunteer email address. All the details will be in the news that goes out. And we'll be soliciting from faculty and staff tomorrow as well. So we're really looking forward to that process. And the next blueprint updates we give you will be when you participate in that day, and then our retreat, and then, of course, to the community in August when we roll out what that work will be.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, we have a few other quick items of business this evening before we close. May we have approval, a motion please, to approve our election inspectors for the 2019-2020 budget revote on June 18?
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Andrea, was it? Yeah, and seconded by Karen. As we know, we've had a lot of budget talk tonight, but we're going to do the budget revote on June 18. So we need a whole set of inspectors and the equipment and everything again. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm going to ask for, I think we can do this cleanly tonight in one motion. Motion please for approval of the first read of the following policies that are listed on your agenda. That would be Policy 7521, Students with Serious and Life-Threatening Medical Conditions, and Policy 7618, Students' Use of Timeout Rooms.
So moved, seconded.
Moved by Marv and seconded by Larry. The reason it's, I think it's entirely fine to do it, it's really a technical fix. It's to change the wording in each policy, amend the wording in each policy to change Director of Personnel Services to Director of Student Services. So when we changed that title, Carolyn's role, there were a few things that didn't get fully changed, and these two policies needed to be updated and amended for that reason and that reason only. So anybody have any further questions regarding that? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Anything further, members of the Board for this evening? Dr. McGowan, anything further?
Well, since it's so early, I did want to dig into.
Funny guy. Again, tonight, thank you, Cord and Marlo. We appreciate you not only being here tonight, but the work toward, for the district this entire year. And we look forward to continuing our relationship further. So thank you both again. Before we adjourn, I will remind the public that we are, our upcoming budget information open house meeting and meetings, we have a number of opportunities coming open house meeting and meetings, we have a number of opportunities coming up for members of the public who wish to come, ask questions, or find out more information about the revised budget that will be voted on on June 18th. All of that information is posted on the website. Tomorrow evening at 5:30 is the next opportunity, and on next Tuesday, the 11th, we will be here at a regular meeting on the 7:00 PM start time, and that will be our formal legal budget hearing on that revised budget also. So with that, may we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Third, Julian, seconded?
Moved by Larry and seconded by Julian. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.